Very good. I hereby call to order this meeting for the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, and the time is 10:00 AM on the nose. Would those commissioners that are in attendance please identify themselves and state as to whether they are here in person or via telephone or via Google meets?
This is Joe Pennington. I'm participating in person.
Thank you, Commissioner. I am Scott Fletcher. I too am participating in person. It's the first time in a long time. This is exciting. And we await the arrival, potentially, of Commissioner Feinstein. Hopefully, he'll be able to chime in at some point. Pressing on. B is our new business. B1 is pursuant to ARS Sections 5-227, 5-228, and AACR19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36. The renewal license application submitted by Mr. German Ivan Maraz for his 2023 professional boxer license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Maraz's application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Maraz is obviously very experienced with record 64 and 65. I've seen Mr. Maraz compete numerous occasions. And what I can say is that I've always seen Mr. Maraz bring his A game, and he always attempts to do his best, and he's very competitive in all of those bouts. Now, I will note that I did speak with him on his training, and he informed me that he trains three hours a day, Monday through Friday. And he runs seven days a week. And he also does strength exercises, push-ups, sit-ups, you know, typical calisthenics. And he said he feels very good physically for his next fight and has not experienced any recent injuries. So with that, I do recommend his approval.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm sorry, there's one item as well, and that Mr. Maraz is set to compete May 6th, okay, on the Iron Boy card. Seeing as though our meeting is quite a ways away, and the next meeting is May 10th, which is after that, he has not yet submitted all requirements for a license. And so I would ask that this will be contingent upon us receiving proper documentation and approving that. Or we could call a special meeting to order for those who see.
Fair enough. What are we short such that we could craft a motion if we need?
We don't have any of his medicals.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so what I can say, though, is that last year he was licensed. He was fit to compete. And so he last competed in November. So, yeah, I have no issue with it. We always take extra precaution and make sure that we vet those items very closely.
Sure. I really appreciate how much you vet these fighters. Mr. Maraz has a lot of mileage on his odometer. He's 36 and has 133 fights in his past. It looks like he either knocks his opponent out or loses on the cards, which I guess is a good thing, right? And he's losing decisions. I went back and found the last time he was knocked out was 2016, I think. So it's been a good while. But I really appreciate you kicking the tires on this one carefully because we want to take a hard look at anyone with 133 fights on their resume.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Pennington, thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I share some of the same concern that you do. However, it appears that based on our executive director's discussion and finding out about his training, I don't have any objections to approving the license.
Thank you. I'd be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228, and AACR19-2-C604 for a fighter over age 36 that we grant a renewal license application to German Ivan Maraz for a professional boxing, 2023 professional boxing license.
So if we're contingent upon?
Contingent upon receiving proper medicals.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I am going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two to zero.
Just like Mr. Chairman, that his boxing record occupies about one half of our agenda.
Number three.
I'll come over there and second if I get done with this.
Congratulations.
Glad to do it.
Look forward to May 6th. B2 is pursuant to ARS Sections 5-227, 5-228, and AACR19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36. The new license application submitted by Mr. Gerlov Roenwaldson for a 2023 amateur MMA combatant license. Vella, you speak to this application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gerlov is a new amateur. He does not have an MMA record. It's my understanding that he has competed in other disciplines and that he has been at this for some time. He's also met at this event with an opponent of equal experience. None. And so I do recommend his approval. We received everything that's needed from Mr. Gerlov, and everything checks out.
Okay, I do see he's with us on the screen there. Thank you for joining us. Gerlov, how do I pronounce your last name?
You actually were closer than most people at a first go, so Ron Waldson, just a silent G.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you for joining us. Commissioner Pennington, thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Executive Director, have you had an opportunity to review the training regimen?
Oh, yes, sir, I do apologize. So Mr. Ron Waldson informed me that he trains five to six days a week, and he only practices three times each week intensely. Okay, he does 90-minute sessions, so an hour and a half each day. He runs for 20 minutes in the morning, Monday through Friday. He says he does wrestling practice Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, boxing on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, and he spars every Wednesday. He says he lifts weights on Saturdays, and he makes ample use of recovery, massage, sauna, et cetera, for proper recovery. He said he's very excited to return to competing, and he has no recent injuries or any health issues to report.
Thank you, sir.
Other thoughts, Commissioner?
I have no other thoughts or questions.
Okay, thank you. I am in the same boat with you. Chair would be open to a motion if one exists.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228, and AACR19-2-C604 that we grant a new license, a new 2023 amateur MMA contestant license to Mr. Gerlov. And I pronounce his last name bad, so forgive that, please, sir. That's my southern coming out.
Okay, we have an interesting motion, one that I am going to second. Where Mr. Roenwaldson, I believe. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Gerlov. We look forward to seeing you Saturday night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just developing the C plan. Oh, Saturday night.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Let's press on to B3. Again, pursuant to ARS Sections 5-227, 5-228, and AACR19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36. The renewal license application submitted by Mr. Greg Smith for a 2023 amateur MMA combatant license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Smith's application.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith is set to compete this Saturday as well. I did have the pleasure of watching him compete last year in October, and it was a well-fought competition. He was very competitive, and I think that he'll do a great job. I do recommend his approval as far as his training regimen goes. He informed me that he trains an hour and a half each day, five days a week, and that he spars a few days out of the week. He runs three times a day and works out with other strength and conditioning exercises every other day. He says he feels very great about his upcoming bout, and he has not experienced any recent injuries.
Thank you. Mr. Vella. Commissioner, Mr. Pennington, thoughts about Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions. Mr. Vella went over the training regimen and seemed to be adequate to compete, so I have no questions.
I tend to agree. The chair would be open to a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228, and AACR19-2-C604 that we grant a renewal license application for a 2023 amateur MMA combatant license for Mr. Greg Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion which I am going to second. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on Saturday as well. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to enter into executive session if there's an appetite for such.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter.
The Commissioner joined.
Oh, good, good. Commissioner Feinstein?
Yes.
You know.
Popped up.
Okay. Thank you, Mel. Commissioner Feinstein, are you with us?
It did.
Yes, sir, I am here. I apologize for being late.
Oh, no, we're glad to have you. Thank you. Thanks for jumping in. We are between items B3 and B4 and discussing the possibility of a motion to go into executive session. Is there a motion for such?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing item B4 and C1 on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion for a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three to zero. We are headed into executive session.
Commissioner Feinstein?
I think you'll have to.
You should have received a link to the executive session if you join in there. We will, yeah, we'll be with you, okay?
Okay, everybody sit tight. We're gonna have to clear the room and head into executive session.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, I hereby call back in order this meeting the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. We are at item B four pursuant to AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh eight. The response to a request for a rehearing by the commission submitted by Ms. Lucinda Morrow doing business as Sweet Science Boxing LLC. Mr. Vella, will you speak to this request, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, upon review of this request, this amended request that was submitted. I it appears to lack the substance that we need. There's no grounds mentioned in this in this letter or this request rather. And therefore, I would recommend that we deny the request.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, any thoughts, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, the Sweet Science Boxing was given two opportunities to provide us with additional information. And they have not provided any additional new information. So based on that and based on the experience that we've had, I recommend that we deny the requests for rehearing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Feinstein, any thoughts?
No, no additional thoughts for me.
Okay, thank you. Chair be open on motion if there is one.
I thought I made that motion. Well, I'll make it. Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny the request for rehearing by the commission from Lucinda Morrow doing business as Sweet Science Boxing LLC.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. The request is denied. Item C is our old business. C one is pursuant to ARS sections five dash two 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 A, five dash two two seven B, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh nine. License application submitted by Mr. Mark Lorenzo doing business as USA WKF for a 2023 outside sanctioning body license to regulate SANDA. Mr. Lorenzo, are you with us?
Here he is. Mr. Lorenzo, you may be muted. I see you on the line, but.
Yeah, he is muted.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Mr. Lorenzo.
There we go. Sorry. My my mouse pad was dying out there. Yes, I'm here.
No worries. We appreciate your time. We appreciate you joining us. We appreciate you taking a month off. We had to get our ducks in a row to talk to you eloquently, and I think we've gotten there now. So thank you. Appreciate you coming to spend time with us. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Lorenzo's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Lorenzo submitted a complete application for an outside sanctioning organization. And and based upon our review, the his organization is a reputable organization that sanctions this sport nationally. And it's recognized by the International Wushu Federation as well. And with that, I do recommend their approval. And I think that they would be effective in sanctioning the sport in Arizona.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, questions, thoughts for Mr. Lorenzo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Lorenzo, what sort of events do you are you thinking of? Do you have plans or do you have anything working at this point if the commission approves your application?
Thank you. At the moment, we don't have something. Maybe we were doing a little bit of a chicken and egg because we wanted to go through the commission first and obviously get any feedback too, if there was anything we needed to adjust, things like that. This year is unique for us to we are hosting the World Championships at the end of the year in November in Fort Worth, Texas. It's the first time it's been outside in the country in the U.S. since 1995. So we've got a lot of focus on that right now. But moving forward, you know, we actually even participated with two events in Arizona before under a former sanctioning body. And while there were some hiccups with that body, I felt like the events were really good. And so we'd be looking to probably partner with those promoters as well moving forward and see if we can help promote those events further.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Feinstein, any thoughts, questions for Mr. Lorenzo?
No, I well, I did have one question. Given that you would be responsible for sanctioning these events in the state, do you have experience working with, you know, different groups that would want to put on events? And can you speak to your inclusivity in terms of allowing different groups to put on events in a given venue, in a given state?
Absolutely. So the USA WKF, we have many events around the country. And we also do Taolu, which is the performance aspect of the sport. There's kind of two sides. If you're familiar with traditional martial arts, you know, the swords and movements based. And then Sando, which is our side, they're all kind of under Wushu. But we do them around the country, and our goal is solely to promote and make the team as strong as it can be when they're going to international competition. So we want to be as open and inclusive as possible to people, you know, from any background, especially Sando, because it's a open type of combat sport. We've been finding a lot of people transitioning over from MMA or Muay Thai because the, you know, it's a it's stand up and then wrestling, but stops at the ground. So basically, we kind of describe it quickly as MMA without the Brazilian Jiu Jitsu aspect, the submission aspect of ground fighting. So really, we're very open to working with with anyone that is going to put on a quality event and just make sure that the standards are high and helping provide those judges that can come in and judge so that the competitors are getting getting judged in a way that it will translate if they go to team and then go to Pan Americans and Worlds. Just because the platform is different than, say, a Muay Thai ring or a cage, the scoring is a little different than some other scoring systems. It just helps them know how to play the game, if you will, and do better in those in those things. Sometimes you have really good fighters, but if the game plan is off, you get outpointed and things like that. So.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lorenzo. I'm personally excited to hear. I think you can do some great things here in the state. That said, we did pull back a Sando license not that long ago. But as you said, I think there were some great events. I think the party running that body had difficulty being open with everybody and giving everyone a chance. Also, transparency is going to be really critical in this relationship, especially Mr. Vella is going to be a great contact point. And we need to know what's going on with you and vice versa. So it's going to be important that if this goes forward, that we all continue to work side by side.
That is exactly what we want. We are very open and try to be as transparent as possible. We never want to appear that there's some sort of favoritism or or bias. As we we select the team, you know, our reputation stands on that. So that is a major concern for us. And, you know, so that's part of our interest in this was making sure that, you know, Arizona seemed to get this nice start going in those events. And I really don't want any kind of bad taste or anything like that, or people feeling like things weren't weren't done the right way. And and so, you know, USA WKF is definitely, and just so you know, we've got some other board members here silently. Matt Wong and Yu and Lee are on the call here, and Corey, one of our judges as well. And Cindy, I believe, as well here. And so some of the people just came in to listen in too. It's a group decision. We don't have one person kind of manipulating or controlling anything. And we're always looking for transparency and fairness.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioners, other thoughts, questions for Mr. Lorenzo?
Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions.
Commissioner Feinstein.
None for me.
Chair be open to a motion if one exists.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS five dash two 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 A, five dash two two seven B, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh nine, I move that we grant a outside sanctioning body license to regulate SANDA to Mr. Mark Lorenzo doing business as USA WKF.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Lorenzo.
Hey, thank you all so much. I look forward to working with you.
Good things come to those who wait. Sorry about the month and a half it took for us to get our ducks in a row, but we're really looking forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic. When's your first event?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. My dog just barked in my ear. She's excited. Yes, Duchess, thank you. You asking a first event?
Yeah.
So right now, our next event currently is going to be our team trials that was already booked in Lubbock in May. So we're going to be doing that. We were we're looking into possibly something over the summertime. Like I said, we have the big World Championships in November after the team is chosen. And that's where all the countries will be coming here for the World Championships. So we're we're it might be going into next year, early next year.
Good. Good. I'm glad we got this done. Anything you need? You know where to find us, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, take care. Thanks again.
Thank you guys so much.
Let's press on to B, which is our call to the public. Those members of the public commission to address the commission must attend in person or via video conference and either raise their hand or utilize the raise hand function to be recognized by the chair. We ask you keep your thoughts to five minutes. Mr. Vella, anyone want to talk to us?
Mr. Chairman, it appears that Sweet Science Boxing has their hand raised.
Okay.
You recognize Sweet Science?
Yes, yes. Are you there? Sweet Science Boxing, you have the floor.
You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can now.
Lucinda, yes, thank you. I just I don't know if this is the proper forum. But one, I asked for a meeting. And two, I'm being told that I had two opportunities to present this. I I don't recall that I recall Vella canceling a meeting on me last minute. So is that one of the times I had the opportunity to provide a response? I met with him on my own afterwards in person and asked for guidance to get an appeal, a request for an appeal. I don't know how I ended up in this situation because he guided me. He guided me in letter writing. I submitted it to him. I don't understand how I had two opportunities. Can you tell me when those opportunities were?
Ms. Morrow, yes, you were given the opportunity. You submitted a letter to which I notified you that it lacked specificity.
In no in person, when I met with you, you said, I'm not to bring that stuff up in the letter. That is to be conducted in person with the commission.
I informed you that that we could not discuss the matters in great at great length, that you would have to refer to the rules.
And to request the letter and the hearing.
I'm going to suggest that that there's no response to the call to the public. The the participant can voice whatever she wishes to state for the record and and leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. I just want I I'm entitled to to a hearing. According to ARS forty one dash ten ninety two, and that was all I was trying to do. A hearing to appeal. And then I get tossed with informal settlement conference. I was asked to write a letter. I asked to meet with Danny Vella. He canceled last minute on me. I emailed him and requested to meet in person. We did. And now I'm I'm really confused at I've never been denied. So this is new to me, and this is what I asked in person with him. What are the steps to resolve this? I'm not saying give it to me. I'm saying what is the steps to resolve this? And you said in this meeting that I've had two attempts or two opportunities. No, where are those opportunities? One was canceled last minute. I took the day off work. I got a motel room. It was canceled the morning of. And then the next time I met in person and there was someone else in there, I I just feel like you guys are. I don't understand this. Can I get a a hearing as stated in this notice of right to a hearing? You told me the substance would be in the hearing. That's what I understood in that meeting with you, Vella. I wouldn't submit a letter after letter without the substance if you were telling me I need to put the substance in the letter. I wouldn't purposely miss the opportunity for an appeal. That was all I was asking.
Okay, yeah, in call to public, no one can respond. It's a five minutes to speak your mind.
That's fine. I just wanted that on record.
Okay, thank you, Lucinda.
Thank you.
Ms. Vella, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any other hands raised. If there are any other members that wish to speak.
Mickey?
Come on, you're the only person in the public we have here.
So with that, sir, no.
Okay, let's press on to E. Call to the commission. Commission members or the executive director may introduce a summary of events, ask questions, and or make comments. Mr. Vella.
Mr. Chairman, I I did not list our information reports for this agenda, but but just want to note some of our up. Mr. Chairman, I I did not list our information reports for this agenda, but but just want to note some of our upcoming events. We have the MMA event this weekend and then kicking off May, Iron Boy Boxing on the sixth, Rage in the Cage MMA on the twelfth, and and LFA MMA on the nineteenth. And so those are up. And our next commission meeting is on the tenth. I would say that I'd like I'm satisfied with the way in which this meeting was conducted in person and the hybrid model. And I hope that maybe we can continue it. And as we get doing it more consistently, maybe more members of the public will join us.
Yeah, our attendance is way down.
Right.
Um, thank you. And thank you for widening calendar. That's good to see. LFA is going to be at Wild Horse Pass, right?
Correct.
Look for a call from Sean Merriman, an ex NFL player. He wants to bring his group here. I talked to him yesterday. He'll be calling you soon and wants to do something there, too. I did want to say one thing. A couple of weeks ago, I got a chance to go to our first professional Muay Thai event at the Celebrity, and it was fantastic. The contests were great. The respect between corners and competitors was fascinating. The crowd was huge. I was really impressed. It was it was special. Bob Carmel, it's hard to figure out what scores because there's so many different ways to score between elbows and knees and feet and gloved hands and throws. There's throws, Joe. So Bob Carmel actually sent me a couple of documents. I'll send them to Mr. Vella and maybe you can send them out to the commissioners. If you haven't seen the scoring system for Muay Thai, it's elaborate. It was very helpful for me anyway, and I look forward to more of those. But it was it was spectacular and a full house at the Celebrity, which I didn't know we'd have that, but a great spirited crowd. And it was a really neat thing. So I'm really pleased to see head in that direction. How about you, Commissioner Pennington? Any thoughts?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've been on the commission now for several years, roughly eighteen or nineteen. And I've noticed over that period of time that the sport of boxing, not necessarily boxing, but MMA and other martial arts has really changed significantly. And I'm noting that a lot of our statutes were written back in the sixties, seventies, eighties, roughly nineteen or two thousand. So I would suggest if if there's an appetite for it, that we start looking at rewriting our statutes so that we bring the the statutes up to date to conform to the modern professional or and amateur combat sports of all nature.
It's a great point, Commissioner. I can assure you, there's an appetite for it. There's some gray area in our statute that we'd love to clean up. It's a healthy task. And then it's getting a bill through the legislature, which is another healthy task. But I think it's a great thought. Commissioner Feinstein, do you have an appetite for something like this?
Absolutely. I think I think it would be excellent for us to find a legislative partner that could help us to update the 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 provisions as it relates to the commission and help us to be both safer, more receptive to promoters from around the world and and allow us to evolve to become, I think, really one of the premier boxing and martial arts destinations in the country. But I don't think that we can reach our full potential without a legislative partner to help us bring updates to some of the statutes that Commissioner Pennington referenced.
Agreed, absolutely. I'm glad everyone has an interest in doing so. Mr. Vella, are you agreeable to headed down this path?
Absolutely, sir. And and we we've identified the breakthrough project scenarios for improvement, and we'd be happy to share that with with the commissioners. Something we've been working on and we continue to work on.
Well, let's let's call it an official task. We're going to start that on the road on. You want to spearhead this thing, Commissioner Pennington? You have that much appetite?
Drive all the way from Tucson every for a thirty minute meeting? No, I'd be more than happy to work on it.
Just in the early stages, we should communicate through Mr. Vella and try and sort out what the document looks like. At the same time, try and sort it. Commissioner Feinstein makes a great point. The document's one thing. Who's holding it's very important, too. So someone to spearhead this that's in the legislature is going to be critical, too. So we need to spend some time on that. But we've got time. Got that going for us anyway, right?
Absolutely.
Although the last time we did this, started talking about it in April, and time ran out quickly, so. Yeah, yeah, so more to come. Why don't we keep this on the agenda going forward, Mr. Vella, so we are forced to talk about it? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Feinstein, any thoughts you want to talk about?
No, I think I kind of already spoke my mind. That was that was the only thing that I wanted to bring up as well.
All right, good. Everybody said their piece, it sounds like, which pushes us into the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be held at ten AM on Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and is subject to change based on a quorum, leaving the possibility of an adjournment if there's a motion and a second and a vote for such.
Mr. Chairman, I move with adjourn.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your time. I think it was a good session. It was nice to do it in face to face. Oh, wait, you'll have to come join us sometime, Commissioner Feinstein. Take care. Everybody be good. Thank you so much.
And it's great to see everybody and meet new people, so.
Yes, thanks for coming up. I mean, that's a joy.